Okay, we're recording, we're good.
All right, I will call the meeting to order. Okay, approval of minutes from the September 21st, 2020 meeting. We'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes.
Second.
Any other conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment, is there anyone here who has anything they'd like to say about items not already on the agenda? I'll take that as a no. So we can move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. We'll entertain a motion.
I move that, yep, there, go ahead.
Any other conversation on that? On favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Onto new business. Land consumption study presentation.
Thank you, Bill. So this evening, I'm going to provide a brief presentation on a recent study that our, that the CRPA has been working on about land consumption within the regional growth boundary. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, or at least attempt to here, and okay, hopefully, everybody can see this all right. All right, there we go. So we've been working on this project now for a couple of months, and we recently provided a presentation on our findings to the Joint TLU and CRPC meeting back in October. So I apologize to Amy Work, who will now be seeing this, at least an iteration of this presentation for the third time. But this is a project that our agency has been working on that I think directly relates to a lot of the discussions we've been having about the R1 zoning district. And in general, I think some of the information here is just good to have in terms of understanding how we're growing regionally. So just a brief overview of this project. The purpose of it was to evaluate residential development densities inside of the growth boundary over time and by municipality. And the goal here would be to understand how much development capacity we have remaining in our growth boundary in terms of how we have been using land. So I imagine that most of the planning commission recalls the Red Cap report that we talk about fairly regularly, regularly when we talk about how much land we have in the growth boundary and how much development it can support. A lot of the calculations for that Red Cap study are based upon are based upon zoning being maximized. And this is looking at how we actually have been developing land and how much land is left or would be left if we continue development in the same trends that we have been. And we also looked at studying some potential benefits of establishing a minimum development density in our growth boundary. That's something that the Comprehensive Plan recommended back in 2013. So just as a quick reminder, our regional growth boundary was originally established in the 2000 Comprehensive Plan. There was iterations of something similar to our growth boundary in previous plans. This is the year when they actually established a growth boundary that pretty much is what we're using still today. This delineates where the majority of future growth can occur. Policies related to the comp plan or to the growth boundary are implemented through municipal zoning regulations. A lot of development within our growth boundary predates the growth bound, or predates the establishment of the growth boundary itself. Density requirements do exist for expanding our growth boundary. So if someone wants to bring land into the growth boundary, they have to meet a minimum density in terms of the proposed development. But we don't have any density guidelines or recommendations for anything inside of our boundary. So why did we look at residential density? Well, over 37% of the land area inside of our growth boundary is devoted to residential uses. In general, we use more land for residential uses year after year than any other use. Residential development, once it's developed, is very unlikely to redevelop. I mean, I can't think of very many examples of single-family neighborhoods that have been torn down and redeveloped. So once this land is used for these purposes, it typically stays that way for a very long time. We do have a significant amount of land within our growth boundary that is planned for residential uses. So if we are thinking about trying to utilize that land as best we can and preserve it as being able to meet our needs for the long term, it's important to understand how we're using land on an annual basis. And then the other thing to consider is that vacant land within our growth boundary is just generally a limited resource. So if you think about it like a bank account, you know, we only have so much in the account. And if we use it poorly, we're going to need to find more, another source of income, another source of land. And normally, that's going to be pressure on developing in our rural areas at densities that probably are not what the municipalities envision. So for this project, what we did is we identified 378 different residential projects, as we're calling them, inside of the growth boundary. In some cases, these were single-family residential neighborhoods. They may have been duplexes or apartment buildings. But what we did is we went back and looked at when they were initially approved and recorded, not when they were developed, but when they were first recorded with the county, when they were first established. And we created a GIS database using these 378 projects that includes over 17,000 parcels and about 5,900 acres of land. And what we did is we categorized each of these projects based on the type of use they were. So if it was a place like Kwood, it would be single-family residential. If it's a place like the Gates, those would be attached units. And then if you're talking about some of the developments out on Jack's Mill Drive, those would have been apartments. So we did that regionally, though, it helped us to understand how we're utilizing land for different residential types throughout the, throughout the growth boundary. And what we did as well was we calculated land consumption for each type of unit within those categories. We did not include roads and rights of ways. So just understanding that sometimes development happens along a road that already exists. So they didn't have to use land to establish the road. So we took those out, but we did include stormwater and open space to get an idea of how much land we're using per unit. So regionally, results were we have about 80% of our residential land area is being used for single-family residential development. If you look at the chart on the right, we have about 80% of land being used for single-family detached dwellings, but they only account for about 40% of all of our units in total within the boundary. Attached units, so these would be our townhomes, duplexes, triplexes. There's far less land used for them, and they also account for a much smaller portion of our overall units. And then apartments, they use just a little over 10% of our land area, but account for more than 45% of the units in the growth boundary. So when we, really what we took out of this was, you know, our apartments and our attached units are probably not as big of an issue. We tend to develop them in a very efficient way. But our single-family detached dwellings, the amount of land we use for those over time has changed quite a bit. They started, we really started utilizing more land for these uses in the 1950s, which is not, it's very consistent with national trends. The 1950s, we started seeing a lot of suburbanization, a lot of large lots being created. And what we have is a regional average of about 0.39 acres for every house that was developed between 1950 to the present. Back prior to 1950, it was under a third of an acre, under 0.3 acres. Attached units and apartments did experience, did experience similar increases in the amount of land consumption, but it's not nearly as dramatic as it is for single-family development. And if you notice there in the bottom, the bottom left, a lot of single-family lots were approved between the 1960s and today. Obviously, in the 2010s, we've had fewer lots approved, but a lot of what's being developed had been approved in previous decades. So what does all of this mean? Well, development density ultimately impacts the long-term availability of vacant land inside of our growth boundary. So if we're utilizing large swaths of land and we're developing it with large, single-family lots, we're going to have less potential development in the future because that land will already have been used up. And the greatest impact is from single-family development. As I mentioned, it's about 80% of our land area is used for that. The average acreage per single-family unit today is about 50% higher than it was in the 1940s. So this graphic here on the right illustrates how much land would be needed to support our single-family developments or our single-family residential units that we studied based on pre-1950, our existing overall land use, and then just the 2010 to 2019 land consumption rate. So had all of our single-family units been developed at pre-1950 rates, land consumption rates, we would only use about 3,700 acres. Currently, based on the amount of land, how it's been used throughout all time, we've used about 4,800 acres. And then if we had utilized the land based on our, our most recent decade of approvals, we would be having over 5,600 acres utilized to support the same number of residential homes. So just, you know, small amounts of, of just encouraging a little more density can make a big difference when we look at the amount of land that is used overall. You know, have we, had we used those pre-1950 rates? If things had continued to develop at a similar density, we'd have an additional 1,100 acres of vacant land in our growth boundary today. So I thought it would be nice to share a little bit about Harris Township and kind of how Harris Township has grown over time. We saw a dramatic increase in the amount of land we used for single-family units in the 1960s when it first jumped up. It did come back down in the 70s, but then went back up quite a bit in the 1980s. So between 1960 and 2019, we've used about 0.74, almost three quarters of an acre for every single-family unit we've developed over the past almost 60 years. So it's important to understand that that rate's very high, in large part due to the fact that we have a lot of single-family homes on agriculturally zoned lots. So think of places like Ashworth Woods, or not Ashworth Woods, that's wrong, Aspen, help me here.
Aspen Heights.
Heights?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have that wrong in here. The Rocky Farm, Bear Meadows, those places. You think the Rocky Farm has very small lots, but when you consider that there's a large open space lot as part of that development, we have a lot fewer homes supported on a very, a very large parcel. If we just look at the R1 zone, it's a little better. Between 1960 and 2019, it was about 0.47 acre per unit that was utilized. So you can see it vacillated quite a bit between 1960 and 1980. But over 70% of the, of the lots we have in our R1 zone were, were developed between 1960 and 1980. So some of the more recent developments that have taken place have been lower in terms of, of use of land use. So in 2000, in the 2000s, we were down to 0.28 acre for every unit that was developed in our R1 district. So another thing, and this is not really part of the report, but something that I was able to do because of the database we created was to just look at the average home size in Harris Township. So between 1960, I'm sorry, but just, just in general here, you can see that the, the number of, or the amount of square footage of our homes really jumped in the 1990s. Prior to that, it really didn't, it vacillated a little bit between the 1940s and the 1980s. But really, in the, in the 1990s, it jumped up quite a bit. And I think that's probably consistent with places like Aspen Heights and Bear Meadows being developed. But it is interesting to see how we've started seeing larger homes being developed in recent decades. And that's also when a lot of our, kind of corresponding to, right after some of our larger lots have been created, probably in the 1980s. I think one of the things to keep in mind is that nationally, there's a lot of evidence pointing to the fact that homeowners are interested in still having large homes, but they are interested in having generally smaller lots. There's some, some information from the Census Bureau where they said that the median home size or lot size has actually been one of the lowest rates they've seen in the last 50 years, just in 2019, that there's, there's a lot of evidence that, that homeowners are interested in having smaller properties. Maybe not smaller homes, but smaller properties, so they don't want to have as much land to take care of. So there's a couple of big recommendations, I think, that came out of this report. First is that the municipality should really look at zoning district designations inside of our growth boundary. About 21% of our vacant land in our growth boundary that doesn't have any type of land development plan for it is zoned for densities of one dwelling unit per acre or larger. Thankfully, in Harris Township, we actually don't have a lot of vacant land in our growth boundary that is zoned this way. There's a small piece out by Tussie Mountain that is zoned agricultural, but that's fairly consistent with, with what's surrounding it. We do have, though, the Bold Mansion property, which is inside of the growth boundary. And the piece of land that's around the mansion itself is zoned cultural, which allows for one dwelling unit per acre maximum. So that's one of the recommendations is that the municipalities look at their zoning and try to, try to make sure that it's consistent with what the purpose of the growth boundary is. Another recommendation is to reduce minimum lot sizes where appropriate. So we have a lot of variation between the municipalities. Harris Township in our R1 district, we only require 7,500 acres, or 7,500 square feet for each single-family home. But there are some municipalities that were in the, in the region, in the R1 district, in their R1 districts that require as high as 12,000 square feet for a single-family home. So reducing that would provide more opportunities for smaller lots to be created, but still support single-family detached dwellings. And then the last one is to establish minimum density requirements. And this is really in line with what we've been talking about with the planning commission here recently. And that is, it can be done with a maximum lot size standard or by requiring all developments within residential districts to meet a minimum development density. There is, I think, as a, as an agency, we think that's something that could be defined within our Comprehensive Plan that we're going to be updating here in a couple of years, maybe just to establish a minimum density for any future residential development in the boundary and then have that implemented through zoning. So I'm going to go ahead and stop my screen share and just mention a couple of examples of places that use maximum lot sizes and minimum development densities. If I know that's something we had talked about in some of our recent discussions on the R1 zone. East Lampeter Township in Lancaster County, they have maximum lot size requirements for several of their zoning districts for residential uses. So for example, they, and their R2 district, which is kind of comparable to our R1 district, they require, or they allow a minimum of 7,500 square feet, which is consistent with what we allow, but a maximum of 12,000 square feet. So anytime someone were to come in and establish a, or propose a new subdivision in their, in that zoning district, they can have lots that range between 7,500 and 12,000 square feet. And then there's some other examples from other municipalities, not necessarily in the state of Pennsylvania, but we're going to have those summarized in the report. In terms of minimum development density requirements, we really didn't find any examples in Pennsylvania, but there are a lot out in Oregon and Washington where growth boundaries are very common. Matter of fact, Oregon, I'm, I'm fairly certain by state law, every community in the state of Oregon needs to have a growth boundary established in order to delineate where they're going to allow rural densities and non-rural densities. So there's a lot of examples of these municipalities out there that have established in their zoning districts that they may require four dwelling units to the acre or six to nine dwelling units per acre, where it's just part of, just part of their zoning ordinance. And there's not necessarily a minimum and a maximum established, but there's language, language within the district itself, which says, if you're going to develop it, you need to at least achieve a density of this many dwelling units per acre as a way of trying to ensure that there's efficient development. So we are going to be finalizing this report. I think we're fairly close to having it done, and we're going to be forwarding it out to the municipalities for then, for that then to be distributed. So I don't know if anybody has any particular questions about my presentation or the study, but I'm happy to go ahead and make sure that everyone gets a copy of it, at least included in their agenda packet, once it's finalized.
I have one question, just for comparison purposes. Do you know, do you happen to know the density and the average house size in Liberty Hill Village?
In Liberty Hill?
Yes.
I don't, I could, I could look it up, but I don't know it off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
See here if I can.
I'm just curious, just, just for comparison purposes.
You want to know the house size?
The, the typical house size, you know, or the range and the, and the density of that development.
Well, keep in mind, Kent, that there's a lot of single-family detached, and there's an awful lot of two, three, four family buildings in Liberty Hill. My recollection is that the zoning permits for the single-family detached, those things went from the upper thousands, like 1,800, 1,900 square feet to over 3,000, I think, in some occasions. There are some pretty big houses out there. And the, you know, the multifamily units were obviously smaller since they fit a bunch of them into, you know, a smaller building area. I think, I think the total density out there was something like 288 or 277, wasn't it, Mark?
Yeah, that sounds about, about 288, I think, is what it was. Yeah, and I can, I can actually pump that number up here real quick. I can tell you at least, like Todd said, there's a variety of housing types out there. Let me just see. It's hard when you're working with 17,000 parcels to find the ones you want. So it was about average, average of 2,300 square feet per unit. And that would be all unit types.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody know off the top of their head, or can somebody Google what 7,500 square feet translates into acres?
I can do that real quick.
Is that a quarter?
Or?
No, I think it's, it's a, it's under a quarter.
Yeah, yeah, it's less. Probably a sixth. Roughly a sixth, I'd say.
Yeah, it's, it's 0.17 acres, so.
Hey. And our, our primary concern here is what we still have within the growth boundary. So we are limited to some degree in how many, how many acres there are available for anything. But it's important that we figure out what to do with what's left within the growth boundary. I'm, I'm really intrigued with the, we, we gave up on the idea of the pocket neighborhood, right? But, but we were looking at more, more density in a few of these kind of isolated patches of acreage in, in trying to, to either do row homes or do individual, not tiny houses, but significantly smaller homes than we're moving right now at 3,500 square feet. You know, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of the rest of the study, but I'm really interested in seeing what we can do in R1 to best utilize what we have left.
Bill, Bill, just a second. You, you may recall in the Small Area Plan 2, there was discussion of mixed use.
Right.
Introducing the concept of mixed use issues, which I think would have an impact here. And.
I think there's a place for it.
And I think, I do, I absolutely, I mean, when Mark brought up the Bold property, I mean, that one came right to mind.
Right, we had discussed that long ago.
Exactly. But Mark, curiously, on your slide where you, you're, you're talking about the residential percentage of the RGB being 37%, what, what, what is the vacant, vacancy percentage?
Um, yeah, I don't have that percentage off the top of my head. Let me find it here real quick for you, George. It'll take me a second to look that up, I do have that here.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm alluding to really is, we know in, in Harris Township, it's, it's kind of de minimis. So we may have, we may have different issues than the region in general, is, is really all I'm putting on the table.
We're about 8% regionally, 8% is vacant.
How recent is that number, Mark?
That is probably, probably from 2019, I think, is when the last time that was.
By, at this point, this year.
I think one of the things to, to keep in mind is, you know, we don't have a lot of vacant land in the growth boundary in Harris Township. We've talked about this before.
Right.
You know, what we do have is primarily zoned R1, at least in terms of what could be used for residential development. And, you know, looking at it, you know, we talked about how, you know, the, the minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet is about 0.17 acres. And if you remember, the, in the last decade, I think the only development we've had is, is Kwood North. And that was about 0.34 per acre per home. So we're, we're almost double what our minimum is. Most, I think the average lot size up there was 15,000 square feet. So with what we have left, if we continue to develop at that, at that density, you know, the ability to support residential development, and I can't recall what our Red Cap number was. Let's say it was 600 homes inside of the growth boundary. You don't want to be looking at 300 homes over the long term. So it is an important thing to, to look at, and I, and I'm hoping that maybe next month, or whenever we talk about the R1 district again, I can bring back some specific examples with this report to maybe help assist in that develop, or that discussion.
But Mark, it's interesting to note that the market seems to be driving the development as something other than developments or something other than subdivisions. I mean, you know, Harris Township has had a fair amount of development from, since 2010 in things like the Gates, you know, where, where, where there's, the density is a whole different ballgame than what it is in Kwood North. So I'm, I wonder, and I challenge in my own brain as to how much of this should be regulated versus market-driven. But I just throw that out on the table.
Mark, do you, do you feel that by having smaller lots, you might be putting some stress on our agricultural or areas for development for people who have the means to buy a bigger parcel of land and put up a bigger house like we have seen? Are we, are we creating a Penns Valley by taking away an option within our ground bump growth boundary?
Well, I think that's a, it's an interesting thought. Certainly, that could happen. I think it would come down to what mechanism the region or the township would use to try to encourage more density or at least more efficient use of land. Because certainly, if you go with a minimum density requirement, it doesn't mean that they couldn't have some larger lots and also some smaller lots. So it wouldn't necessarily mean that you couldn't find an option inside the growth boundary to meet your, meet your needs. It just might be that, there might be some smaller lots there too for people who want smaller properties.
Mark, did I hear you say earlier in your presentation that the regional growth boundary could be expanded if a proposed development had high enough density?
It can, but there's still, there's still a lot of difficulty in having that happen because there still needs to be five of the six municipalities vote in favor of it. But anytime someone proposes an expansion, they have to at least have a development that will meet a minimum density. They can't just come in, as, as once was the case, you, you at one point could just come in and say, I would like my land to be in the growth boundary. You didn't have to have a project associated with it. You could just come in and say, I'd like it in, and then the municipalities could add it or not. That was the case with Benjamin Heights, which is just above Springfield Commons. There was talk of putting a nursing home, a personal care home on that property when they came in. But it's been vacant now for the last, you know, almost 10 years that it's been in the growth boundary because that development fell through. Now, if you want to come into the growth boundary, you have to have a development. You have to enter into a development agreement, and that development has to achieve at least one dwelling unit to the acre or greater. Or actually, I'm sorry, greater than one dwelling unit to the acre. It can't be anything under, you know, one dwelling unit or less. It's still a very low threshold.
Yeah. Okay, um, any other comments along this line? I look forward to seeing the, the further information that you get, you bring to us that, that the next meeting, Mark, that's it'll help a little bit as far as trying to wrap my head around what particular pieces we're looking at and, and what we might want to do with them.
Sure.
I guess, if I just, you know, if we're going to, I'm kind of leaning towards following back on what George was saying about being market driven, because there isn't a significant amount, I shouldn't say significant, it's not like we have large areas of, of tracts of land to try and, and manage. And I, I think to, to some extent, the most effective way to handle that would, would be to let the market dictate. So.
I agree with that. I mean, I built in Fairfield and Harris Acres and those, um, there, if I'm right, Todd, that most of those properties about a half acre. And they sold incredibly well and they continue to sell really well. And so, one of the more developable, desirable places to sell a house. And so, I don't know, it seems to me that that isn't an issue. I wish we had a little more R2, because they seem to sell really well too. I'm not so sure that, um, for what you can get, you know, it's tough to put a product out under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars without thinking of R2 or, you know, townhouses. It's very difficult to do that in developed land, no matter how small it is. To get something on the market, which is the desirable marketplace to be, you know? Other than that, you're looking at the four or five hundred thousand dollar range. And so then adding a little bit more property to that seems to make sense to the people who are buying the house when they're buying a twenty-eight hundred square foot house. You know? So that's just my idea on the market, I wouldn't, I, I don't think I would try to put a a three hundred thousand dollar house on a sixth of an acre. You know? And that's it, that's where it is.
I'm s- I'm sorry, I missed your opening, did you say you're in favor of letting the market drive it?
Yes, I am. I, uh, I, I would let the developer research the market at the time when he wants, and he's putting everything at risk by developing that that piece of property, which is incredibly expensive, it's just expensive, just, just to get it past zoning and have a plan. You know, um, I don't know, it, he, he would know at the time that he was going to do it better than all of us, because he would, would pay for the research before he committed himself.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that the, that the term desirable market really depends on what point of view you're looking from. If I'm a developer or I'm a landowner, uh, I would say the desirable market is the one that's going to make me the most money. Uh, if I'm in my twenties or thirties or even forties and fifties and trying to find a affordable house to get out of renting or my first house or something like that, I would say the desirable market is not a three hundred or four hundred thousand dollar house, whether it's on a small lot or a large lot. Uh, I know lots more people trying to find a small house to live in now than I know people trying to find a large house to live in now, simply because there are plenty of large houses available for sale, and there aren't a lot of small houses available for sale if you, if you look at the real estate ads, so, uh, I, I think the market is there, it's just not desirable, uh, to the people that are doing the developments, because historically, they don't make as much money doing that.
Um, I, I just have to throw in two more cents on that, I don't think you'll be able to regulate them into doing it as a result of that, so.
Well, I, I think you can try, because I, I think, I think that's what we've done forever. We, we've decided as a municipality, how we want our municipality to look uh, in ten years or twenty years or fifty years, and we adopt regulations, sometimes we think of them on our own, sometimes we take them from other places and put them in there and see what they do. Um, if we do nothing, we're going to get more of the same. But, but that's a, that's a philosophical issue that, you know, you and the board of supervisors have to decide. I don't, I don't care one way or another how Harris Township develops, because I don't live here, I don't pay taxes here. I'm just simply pointing out the fact that if you don't put in regulations to make the municipality look the way you want it, you're going to get the municipality looking the way developers want it.
Right. So I think.
They don't live here either.
That's correct.
Right, and, and allowing the market to drive it to some degree is, uh, uh, you know, I think a worthwhile, uh, consideration, but I don't think it should be our only consideration. I like the idea of minimum lot sizes, I like the idea in some of these areas that we have left to develop, of having maximum lot sizes so that we are able to provide a variety of housing in the township and not just simply have another baremotos village in what's left of a chunk of property between, you know, back near, near the, the old Biddle Farm. Uh, you know.
I, I agree completely with that, and that's why I was such a fan of the opportunities afforded by the conservation design approach.
Right, exactly, so, you know, um, as I, like I say, I think of, of giving market opportunity to bring us some more stuff uh, next month to, to help narrow Harris Township down a little bit, um, may be a worthwhile endeavor.
Could I?
Yeah.
Ask a question, is it possible to see, and I can't visualize it, but how much of our pro- how much based on location is not in either the small area plan or the conservation design plan?
Well, we really don't have much R1 at all in the co- in the small area plan. There was, the only piece that was, was the Biddle Farm that was right behind the, uh, the Bold Mansion property. So the rest of the R1 properties that are vacant wouldn't be part of the, you know, part of the conservation design either. So, I, I guess, are you, are you asking how many acres are outside of that that are vacant? Is that what you want to know?
Not only that, but what's, what's it look like geographically or pictorially? I mean, we, we've kind of brought up the idea of, well, we don't want this to happen, we don't want the developers to, you know, determine what the, the the area looks like, okay? So we've kind of already started to scope that out, right, with the small area plan and, and conservation for design. All right, both of those, okay, so now you're, we're down to what percentage of our, our land, all right, do we need to manage? And what do we want that to look like?
And are we satisfied with what's already been decided for small area plans still being included in?
Right.
Small area, you know?
So, uh, that's where I was in my question, that's all.
So can I make a suggestion, because we have a couple of other things we need to get to tonight? And this is a good conversation, but I would suggest that maybe we put a pin in this conversation, and when things perhaps slow down a little bit in the winter, we come back and we can um, address some of your comments and your questions and have a longer discussion on this.
Amazing.
I was, I was going to suggest the very same, same thing, Amy, because I think this is a, uh, important conceptual conversation for the planning commission to have with the remaining acreage that we have, and this sort of market driven versus incentivizing some alternatives to a completely free market approach to development, so. Yeah, I agree, let's move on with the agenda, but make sure we, a lot, maybe it's a meeting or three quarters of a meeting, or a special meeting even, to something as important as this, please.
Yeah, where we actually plan for it to take up three quarters of a meeting. Yeah, I like the word, Chris, the, the incentivizing, I think is a very, very good, uh, word to remember when we get back to this.
So do we need an action, do I need to move to return to this item, or are we just able to summarize and move on?
We'll just summarize and move on, well, we'll put a pin in this and come back to it when things slow down a little bit, but I think we need to move into the meat of your meeting now.
I would love to think that appointing a nominating committee is the meat of the meeting. Fortunately, I know better, but we need to, uh, determine a nominating committee to select officers for next year. Um, do I have any volunteers? The silence is deafening.
Hurt your eyes.
I'm doing, I'll be on it.
Bob?
Yep.
All right, uh, Amy, what do we need, two or three?
Usually we have two.
Anybody else?
I'd be happy to help, Bob.
All right.
Is that Amy?
Yep.
All right, congratulations, both of you.
We'll meet, uh, six fifty before next meeting.
Deal.
I was going to nominate you two.
This is why you want to volunteer for the committee.
That's what happened to me the last time.
Uh-huh.
It does not exempt you, Amy.
Oh, yes, it does, I'm voting power.
It says right here in the, in the, in the agenda that I'm supposed to appoint a committee and ask them to report back. So I'm not allowed to volunteer to be on the committee in order to keep myself from being railroaded into doing this.
You, are you eligible?
I don't know, what is the deal?
I don't. I think.
Step down after two years?
I think we have precedent that, you know, it's like after two terms, the chairman steps aside and someone else steps into that role.
Oh, my wife will be so happy.
Kent Baker would be an excellent chairman, I'm just saying.
Think he's got some experience?
Yeah.
I would be more than happy to email both members of the committee with my recommendations, but let's move on to the next item. Okay, uh, old business, utility scale solar.
So at last month's meeting, planning commission spent a considerable amount of time talking about utility scale solar uses and where they should be allowed, if at all, in the township's rural areas. Um, a couple of things that I took away from that meeting is that the planning commission all agreed that these should not be allowed in the proposed natural areas district or on any open space parcel that was created either through our existing rural clustering regulations or the proposed conservation design regulations. You also did talk about maybe regulating these uses in terms of their development on farmland soils and possibly establishing a maximum size for their use. So there's a couple of different things here in the agenda that we've included to help you with this discussion. The first is, uh, development on farmland soils. Uh, I put together a couple of maps to help illustrate where these are located at, um, as well as some definitions of what constitutes prime ag soil versus farmland of statewide importance. Um, there's a little bit of information here about, uh, restricting these uses by the maximum, by a maximum size in total. Um, that was something that our solicitor did not recommend, we, we consider, he felt that it would be better to kind of continue with a, our existing approach of, of using the existing lot size and then having a percentage of a lot size that could be covered by these uses. He felt it would not be defensible to just say you could only have a, you know, a, a solar farm of ten acres in size and no greater. And then there's also some information on agrivoltaics, this is something that, uh, Todd and I recently attended a web, or participated in a webinar on about, uh, having ag uses and, um, uh, utility scale solar uses kind of being blended together. Uh, I did reach out to a professor at Penn State Dickinson, asking if there's any municipalities that have regu- regulations on these, and I did not get any information back yet, so hopefully I will hear back from him at some point. And then finally, um, CRPA staff had presented the concept of maybe putting together a regional model ordinance on these uses, because this is something that both through my education, because of having, having some interest in this here in the township, as well as our sustainability planner has been looking into this as well, it's becoming a very, uh, I would say a very prominent issue in terms of planning throughout the state. Uh, the Marcellus Shale outreach folks at Penn State have kind of shifted to now start talking about solar, utility scale solar, because it's becoming kind of a new natural gas industry, so to speak, in sense that municipalities are often unprepared. Um, and are, are showing up, you know, ready to, shovels ready to, to move in municipalities that don't have regulations, so. Um, we did present the idea of doing a regional model ordinance at the joint TLU and CRPC meetings here earlier this month. They were not in favor necessarily of a model ordinance, but they did ask us to go back and work with the other municipal staffs on maybe putting something together, and I think what we're looking at is probably putting together some type of a utility scale um, regulatory toolbox that can include some differing recommendations on regulations for the municipalities. So, uh, our recommendation here this evening is just utilizing the information we provided to have the planning commission continue in your discussion um, and, and provide us with any additional information on what you might need to move this forward, or if you're interested in waiting until that regulatory toolbox gets put together by our agency, uh, just giving us some direction on that as well.
Look, I, I have one question for you, Mark, what is considered, uh, green infrastructure?
In terms of agrivoltaics?
Yeah, I mean, it says recommending municipalities, uh, not permit development of green infrastructure on farmland soils, is that what we're talking about here is a, um, uh, alternative energy generating source on farmland?
Yeah, that, that, um, that actually, from the report that we did on sustainability of agriculture, the, uh, we were looking at both wind and solar, so that was green infrastructure, it was referring to both.
So when, when we are talking about, uh, it was just a piece of jargon, I wanted to clarify, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, so, last meeting, the thing that last meeting, the thing that I got out of this more than anything else is that we don't wish to develop any um, green infrastructure on prime agricultural soils. Is there pretty much consensus on that?
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay, and then the next thing that came to me as a, and, and I don't know how much consensus there is, but it was a topic that was discussed over and over is if the land is zoned for agricultural uses, would a photovoltaic array for utility solar uh, generation constitute an industrial use that would then require the land to be zoned industrial? Is there consensus on that?
Yes, I, I think it should be zoned industrial, um. I happened to be riding down Route One south of Dover last week, and I saw my first agricultural solar farm, so I pulled over, I'm sorry, I didn't take a picture. What amazed me about it was, in my mind, I kept thinking about these solar panels that go on roofs or the solar panels that are below the hospital. These puppies were four times that big, they were huge. I mean, they were fifteen feet, sixteen feet long, eight feet wide. So it's a lot bigger presence than you, uh, you know, you're not going to be able to decide what size solar panels are going to put on. So this farm field did look like a sheet of glass. Um, surprisingly, I, I didn't really find it revolting, but I was, I was surprised how big the panels really are. Uh, when they get to this type of a thing, it's not a little panel with little rose panels, it's, they cover that property.
Jeff, do you remember where that was?
Just south of Dover, I rented a little house on the beach, South Bowers. So it was just down one past Dover, if I remember right.
I'm headed there this week. I'm headed there this week. If I figure out what county it's in, I will make a phone call. My concern is, was that industrial land? We, we don't have a lot of industrial land left in Harris Township.
Looked to me like it was in ag, but it was along Route One, so who knows how it was zoned. But there's a lot of farms south of Dover.
Right, but, but is this, you know, an agricultural piece or is the, you know, is it zoned agriculture? Or is it zoned industrial? If we, if we're going to keep this, you know, if we're going to say this is only supposed to happen on industrial land, we're essentially saying no to the concept, right?
I could, if I could comment on that, I, I don't feel that we did resolve that issue, Bill, last month. And, and I have two points to make on this. And Jeff, I'm really glad that you were in Dover, Delaware, because what else is prevalent in ag business in Delaware, in that part of Delaware? It's poultry.
Oh, there's a lot, a lot of chicken farms, yeah.
And poultry, poultry, if you take a look at what a typical massive poultry operation looks like, it's a low shed barn that can be massive and just rows and rows and rows of these things. Visually, I would argue not a lot, less or more pleasant than a, than a solar array. That's, that's, that's a point I'd like to make, because I don't think we should, just on the look of it and the cover, the impervious coverage of a, of an agricultural installation, decide that solar is bad and, you know, poultry sheds are, are good. I just, that just doesn't compute for me. And the other part that I want to make is, and I've been reflecting on this a lot, you know, what is ag essentially but harnessing solar power? To convert solar energy into energy that humans use, whether it's feed or, you know, crops, crops for human consumption or crops, ethanol, whatever it might be. So if we are, I don't feel that harnessing solar energy with a certain piece of equipment that converts it to another usable form of energy is not, in fact, essentially an agricultural activity. I just want to make those two points and have us think about the look, the, the coverage, if you will, comparing a, a very, you know, regular old massive poultry operation, which we don't have any in Harris Township, but there's nothing to say that we don't and won't have them at some point. Acres and acres and acres covered by a 12-foot-high, too, too, too sloped roof. And then the second point, just to reemphasize this matter of harnessing sun's energy for our energy in a different form.
Well, and I'll add to that, Chris, my sister lives over in Union County, and the poultry operations over there are on almost every plot of farmland, and their roofs are covered with solar panels in order to try and keep the energy costs down for heating and cooling the, the chicken houses. So, you know, the difference between a solar array on the roof of the chicken house versus a standalone solar array, I, I tend to agree with you that I'd prefer that. The, the permeability of a solar array, to tell you the truth. My, my feeling on this, and I don't know whether I've made it strong enough, I'll let everybody else talk about it from there, is that I think we ought to give the people who own these farms the opportunity to try and take advantage of doing some form of alternative energy generation in order to mitigate the, the costs of operation on their farms. I agree that if we are going to do this right, we probably should keep it off the prime soils. And I appreciate Mark's map, because Mark's map says that it's not all prime soil. There might be acreage available for them to do it. I think that we talked about the permeability percentages per acre, per, you know, square foot, per parcel, whatever, as being somewhat of a limiting factor on the size of what can be put up. But I think we ought to give the farmers the opportunity to, to, to work with this and try and try and survive. Otherwise, we're going to see more townhouses than we are potentially solar arrays. So, anybody else?
So I'll comment. My, my, I had made the comment about the size, maximizing the size, and I'll concede that point. But that's not legally, technically feasible, I guess, so I'm okay with that. But I think, I think another way, I still would like to control these to a certain extent. So certainly, I think that we should restrict them from prime ag land, and I think we should discuss restricting them from farmland of statewide importance as well. If we would take both those areas, I think it is, it becomes very limiting as to where these things could be located, at least as far as the ones that are for utility purposes. And I'm not talking about ones that are, might be to support the ag use itself.
I'm inclined to want to hear more about the agrivoltaics, the blend. When we heard the presentation this summer, it was clear that they didn't know the farming that happens around here. But I'm interested in knowing, what kind of plants are we talking about? What kinds of animal life might be a good combination? And that would give the farmer a variety of options to continue to do the more traditional notions of farming, but also do the sustainable strategies that, that George mentioned.
So I can tell you, and Todd can jump in if I am incorrect on any of this. I think the most that we heard about in terms of, the most common example we heard about in terms of animals were sheep. Goats apparently are horrible. They'll just eat the panels and the wires and everything else. But sheep were very common. I think there were a few maybe that had cattle.
For allowing goats.
I think a few allowed cattle, or, or, I shouldn't say allowed. There were a few examples of where these farms had cattle ranging. As far as plant life, I can't say that I, I remember them talking about very many specifics in terms of, of, you know, actual crops being raised between the panels. I think more than anything were pollinator plants.
Right, that's a, that's a big thing in the industry is pollinator.
Right, the only example I know I found, I was trying really hard to see if any places require this, because these were, what we heard were examples of places that have managed to do it where there, there are these two uses that are symbiotic, but it's been by choice, not by requirement. So the ones that I, the only place I found that required it was, I think, in Minnesota. There were some examples of municipalities that required pollinators and prairie grasses to be planted. It's kind of a rehabilitation measure. But I didn't find any examples of the places in Pennsylvania that said you have to allow or you have to have an active ag use in conjunction with your solar farm.
And I think the only two things I would add is, I, I seem to remember the webinar stating that in most cases, if not all cases, the, the farmers chose to do one or the other. They did not have plantings and animals on the same property for the obvious reason that the animals would eat the plants, although they could switch back and forth periodically between animals and plants. The other thing I seem to remember, and Mark, correct me if I'm making this up, but I seem to remember them saying the larger the animal, the higher the panels and the, and the, and the infrastructure, the, the wires had to be. If you had cattle, the, the panels and all the stuff that went with it had to be mounted far enough up that the, that the cattle wouldn't damage the, the equipment. So that's an additional cost if, if someone's going to have larger animals. So I, I think sheep and smaller, I think they called them ruminants, were the, were the types of animals that were typically associated with agrivoltaics.
Yeah, I think that's correct. One thing that was interesting is they did talk about how plant life, when managed properly, actually increased the efficiency of the panels because it reduced the temperatures around them. But I don't know if there was a cost benefit analysis of how much effort it takes to maintain that plant life versus how much more efficiency they got out of the panels. I didn't, I didn't hear.
I think that's one of the reasons that they went to pollinators is because they were very low maintenance.
Well, and you wouldn't have to get equipment in there to manage the, the plants.
Right.
Depending on what the plants are.
Right.
You know, the point, Jeff, sorry, go ahead.
The ones that I saw, they, between a row of panels that, you know, could be a quarter mile long, the distance between set panels was enough, obviously, to get an equipment truck to drive through that area. So if you had maintenance or had to replace a panel, you had the ability to do so. So it wasn't like a small walking area or anything. It was something that you could drive a, a truck through.
Yeah, yeah, a comment, a comment that I wanted to make is, you know, if restricting this or keeping it from prime ag lands and statewide important land, it still does leave hundreds, in fact, maybe over a thousand acres available in Harris Township for this kind of development on ag zone property. So it isn't as if we're making it so restrictive, if we go ahead with this, that it's so restrictive that people would say, yeah, you're allowing it, but you're not really allowing it. There is ample room, ample room here for a smart, thoughtful way to, to permit solar, you know, industrial scale solar on ag land. It's not threatening good soils.
But the point there is how to permit it.
Yeah, 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 those, the devils and the details, for sure. But I think in terms of scaling this and approaching it from a, a reasoned, a reasoned, several reasoned perspectives, I, I think that we're, we're getting to someplace that, that could work.
One of the things I think that we glossed over one time that I think will be a real problem here in Harris Township was that a lot of these parcels of land that you see soybeans and corn being grown on, they're actually leased. And you will be taking away an amount of money from the farmers who may have a 200-acre farm, but they may lease another 400 acres off of other individuals. And, and not being able to do that would be a real hurt to them. And that is a lot of our properties. I mean, most of the properties I work on, that I seem to be doing some work on, they're always talking about, well, how low the lease rate is, because they're leasing, you know, 50 acres or 100 acres to some farmer to, to do what he wants with, you know, for the season. And those are the properties I think that would be advantageous for that homeowner or that landowner who is not a farmer to get a better return on his money by going on a 20-year lease for solar panels. It's good for him, but it's not going to be good for our local farmers because they rely on that piece of property to rent and to make their production higher.
But remember, we are talking about not removing the prime or the historical, what are they, what's it called? Historical value or something along those, state value or something. We're not talking about eliminating all of that farmland, Jeff. We're talking about what would be considered the, you know, lower third of quality so that the prime land for the soybeans and the, and the, I mean, I don't remember exactly what Mark had in here as far as total acres that were left. But we're looking at like 15 parcels that have 75 acres worth of, of available land. Is that, is that what I'm seeing, Mark?
No, that's not, that's not correct. So what you are seeing is there were 12 properties that are 75 acres or more that have five plus acres of land that is not encumbered by either of those soil types. So you have at least 60 acres of property available that is on very large parcels. And, and the reason, I mean, I can go back and provide a lot of different data to you. It was hard to summarize this because the land is, is all over the place.
Yeah.
And we didn't want to, I didn't want to summarize it in too many ways and make it even more confusing. So this was really talking.
Very well either.
Could, is it possible just to see, Mark, to show us what would be viable? To cut out everything else and just kind of gray out everything else and just show us what would be viable?
Well, you kind of have that.
It's on the, the second map shows that essentially.
The second map, everything that's just white, that's in a parcel that's outlined in black. Anything that's all white could be technically developed as utility scale solar. My first one showing that property acreage was, there's not a ton. What it was, was to try to, the, the table was to try to, to, in, in terms of if you're going to set a max or a minimum lot size and say, you only want these on properties that are 50 acres or more in size. This was to show how many properties that are over 50 acres, for example, would have at least five acres of land that could be developed for utility scale solar. So if you were to say 50 acres is your minimum lot size, you'd have 15 properties that could take advantage of developing at least one megawatt of utility scale solar.
Yeah.
Right.
So it is very limiting in that sense, but it doesn't eliminate it completely.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, this is Paul speaking.
Sure.
I'd like to have a little comment about prime soils. On my, on my farmland here off of Windmill Road, a couple of years ago, we had DEP and the SEO trying to search for good soil for sand mounds. And 50, 40 to 50% of the 95-acre parcel here was, was not passable, which means the soils were, were thin and washed away over the many, many years. And so only about 50% roughly in back of Mountain View Acres was decent, good soils for farmland versus the back half up towards the wooded, wooded area at Orchard Hill was very thin soils and not very conducive to sand mounds or anything like that. So what I'm throwing out is, if you could do a farm parcel that you have weak soils and be able to do something with 50% of those, of that farmland to either partial development or solar farming, then you could work with a property owner or farmer. And, and the other thing is that farmers, the rent that is being paid to, to landowners are very, pretty small in this area. I've had a couple of calls from farmers from Lancaster County wanting to come up here for potato farming, which is quite interesting. Don't know much about it, but they're almost double, triple the value that they're willing to pay for the lease. I think it was Jeff was saying earlier that, that some of these farmers are really not getting paid the value of their land that should be, that, because of the increasing of, of taxation and, and the maintenance of it, so on. And the other factor is too, is the deer damage to certain crops. Like the farmer that I've had up to this past year, corn crops, he had so much deer damage, he's not quite interested in putting corn in again. So, but that's something to think about in, when you measure farmland, is where are the good soils, bad soils? If it's all good soils, that's one thing. But some of the prime soils are not, maybe not as good as y'all think it might be. So that, I mean, those are some thoughts I just wanted to throw in. For instance, okay, so if you have 50%, you could go to solar. And 50% farming of chicken houses to utilize the land more efficiently. So I'd, I'd like to throw that out so you can think a little bit, how does a farmer or landowner use that land more efficient other than just a corn crop where you have stocks left over, you know, after they take the corn off, things like that. So I appreciate being able to throw that out to you because I've got the experience and all. out to you because I've got the experience in all of that. And so I'll, I'll leave it up to you folks to continue your discussion. Thanks.
So Paul, I just had one question. On these, this, these soils, you said that wouldn't pass a perk test, would, would those classified as prime ag land? In your case?
Well, when you mentioned prime, who, who, who really labeled the prime farmland? What is prime farmland? Whether it's a soil depth or whether it's just planting crops? So that, again, that's why I'm thinking that over the years, I've been, DEP and the SEO, former SEO that we had, that some of the soils are not as good as people think they really are. They're pretty thin soils. In fact, in doing some of the land over along Missy Hill Drive, there was one parcel that I really wanted to build a home on, seven acres. DEP did soil testing and we looked over seven acres. We had trouble finding a part, a place to put a sand mound on. We found one place, you have to have 40 inches of soil. It came out to 39 inches and they would not approve that site. I mean, so we had to go to another parcel to extend that sewage system because it was better soils. It was among some tree, tree, so on. So some of the soils not as good as you may think they are. Good for, good for corn, wheat, those things, but they're not, may not be prime either all over the township.
Okay. Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at the map and I see in, in the area you're talking about, it, it looks like a lot of that area is, in at least in our map, is colored white. So it would, it is not in the, what's called the prime ag or agricultural lands or farmland of statewide importance.
Mark, who makes the determination as to what's prime or statewide importance?
That's the US Department of Agriculture for prime farmland. And farmland of statewide importance is also the USDA, but in consultation with the State's Department of Agriculture, where they identify soils that might be unique to our state, maybe don't meet the prime ag, prime farmland requirements, but nonetheless are considered optimal when managed properly to produce various crops and things of that nature.
Which strikes me as a standard that we probably ought to consider as being pretty solid.
Yeah, there's science behind it for sure.
Do I, do we have legal footing on it, however, would be my question?
I'm assuming that would be the reason we would want to go with it is because if the USDA is telling us that's what's going on, then that, that's a better, better indicator than we're going to find anywhere else.
Yeah, I would say that's a, a legal designation. So you would be okay. You would have cover to go with that.
And if someone feels there.
Applies to both categories? Sorry.
I'm sorry, what did you say, George?
And you, you, you think that applies to both categories, the.
Yeah, I would think, yeah, I would think that if the two regulating bodies, the USDA and the PA Department of Ag are saying that they're important farmlands or prime farmlands, I think that yes, you're fine on that.
What I was going to say is if someone does not believe that their property has those soils, they could certainly always have a soil scientist be retained and come out and study, you know, where those boundaries might be if they think they're incorrect.
Is there, is there much further we can go tonight at this point without giving Mark an opportunity to go back and, and see whether or not there's going to be any more movement on a model ordinance that we would be able to use here. I mean, I feel like we made a lot more progress tonight than we did last month because we kept talking about a bunch of divergent ideas and never quite got to the core. I mean, what else, what else can we do tonight? What else can Mark help us with next month?
Can I ask a question, please? And this is a very sincere question because you guys have been talking about this for a couple of months now. My question is, is this something that you want to continue to pursue now? Or do you want to put a pin in this and wait and see, A, what the region does? Or maybe wait and see, B, what, you know, me with supervisors in January, which is just a couple of months away, get their take on what they want to do and maybe get some feedback from them? Because I feel like we're starting to go in a circle. And I'm not sure that we want to continue to go in a circle.
So I'll, I'll just comment that I think that the information we got tonight was very helpful.
Yes.
I personally, at this point, I think the easiest and cleanest way to do this would be to restrict the shoes from prime ag lands and prime agricultural soils and farmland of statewide importance. And then not worry about all the other things.
Yeah, I think Amy, we've drawn ourselves a smaller circle. And we're a little more firm in standing inside that smaller circle. But I do think that we, we might not be able to go much further with this other than where we've gotten tonight until we get a little bit more direction from the supervisors. And I'd be interested to see what the center region is trying to fight with the same way we're trying to fight with this.
If I could just ask one more question of Mark while we have him and we have these maps in front of us. The, the, the question that kept going through my mind as I was looking at the lower portion of the map where a lot of this white area is that we're discussing is it kept coming to my mind, Mark, is, is, is if there are slope issues that would impede the use of those parcels for solar.
Right. Those parcels are outside of the natural areas district. So they do not have consistent slopes of 15% or more. There may be pockets of land in those areas, as you're pointing out, that might have some slopes that would need to be avoided. That's another issue that we would have to somehow look at even more closely. However, we were looking just strictly by zoning district at this point because that was the direction I got last month. But if it is something you want me to look at even more to see what areas that are white down there would maybe have, you know, pockets of 15% slope on them because there certainly are probably a few areas that do, I can, I can come back with that information if that's what you would like me to look at.
Would that naturally rule out using, installing solar panels? So I'm not sure that that, so that's my question. Doesn't it mean that that would rule it out?
What, what I would say is that our proposed zoning for the rural rezoning that we'll be talking about here is our next item. We did have restrictions where you could not have development on slopes over 15% without there being some geotechnical evaluation. It does not rule it out, but they would have to at least demonstrate that putting those panels on those slopes would not result in any type of disturbance to the soils that might cause erosion issues or, or anything else. But I don't think it rules it out. It would just be, they'd have to do some studying to check that it could be done safe, safely.
I would like to voice my support for Kent's suggestion, which I think seems like the direction this conversation was headed in in that we'd like to protect the farmlands. And so that seems like a, both a legally safe place to arrive at, but also a comfortable place in terms of this conversation.
I agree.
I, I, I agree, but I don't want to at this time assume a minimum lot size or a minimum acreage on which to put, you know, to maybe install this. I don't think we're quite down to those details yet. So I think conceptually, just ag, ag lands outside of the prime ag soils and, and the statewide important soils.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, this is Paul again, if I may speak.
Go ahead.
As, as a landowner, there's about 85 acres. I'm break, trying to break off 11 acres from my own home site out of 95 acres roughly. At my age, I'm trying, I'm trying to consider what do I do with property going forward, the next year to two years. My family does not, is not interested in a, in a property. And also, so I'm looking at my options. So I look at a couple of options. You know, as I mentioned before last month, I could look at a developer that, there are two that are very much interested. And/or looking at solar, 50% of the land for solar. And the other 50% in keeping it as farmland into crops. I've got a farmer ready to go. I didn't farm it this year because the farmer that had been doing it broke his leg that spring and he was kind of hung up. But I would like to look at my options that I have available to me. So if you, and I was just sitting here thinking of maybe advertising land for chicken farming. Now, I don't know if there's any large odors from chicken farming. You can't not put feedlots in or raise pigs or different things. So you're getting restricted, you're putting restrictions on farmland. So now what are options to farmers or landowners that are wanting to retire or sell their land? And that's something I think you folks should consider. The people that own the land, what are you, options are you giving them to just keep it as farmland forever and that they, they don't get the return on that property to really take care of anybody? So I just wanted to throw those out for you to think about it to what options do you or will you provide? Farmland, farmers or landowners? Thank you for that time.
Thanks, Bill. I think we're at a point where we probably ought to, as Amy says, put a pin in it and move on. We can either talk about it next month a little bit more, but I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to put as much conversation into it as we did last month. For a while at least, until we hear more of what's going on with the center region. Anybody else? Do we have consensus to move on to the rural rezoning update?
Yes.
Yep.
Please, Mark.
All right. So I'm not going to go through every item on the, in the agenda language, but just in general, we did hear back from the township solicitor last week about, or actually the week before last, about the complete rural rezoning package. He did provide just a, a couple of comments. I don't think any were that significant. I did summarize them in your agenda language. I think the most significant ones that we are going to be following up with the solicitor on are, he had some, some questions on how we define single family detached dwellings on farm lots, but also on residential lots in our ag district. I think both Todd and I, after going through those regulations, feel that we had some pretty good reasoning for defining them separately. And we're just going to verify with him that based on the reason that we had for it, that it makes sense. Another thing that we want to follow up with is putting in some type of a definition for both livestock and poultry. Both Todd and I also talked about maybe having a definition for wild animals at some point, but that might be a different ordinance that we would have to deal with later. Not necessarily related to our rural rezoning, but just as a, a way of trying to ensure we don't have people walking their pet alligators downtownship sidewalk.
Oh, I didn't even consider that.
That already happened. That happened a couple of years ago.
So, but for now, we would just look at livestock and poultry. That was a recommendation that he had. And it does make sense just to make sure that it's understandable or understood what we're allowing in terms of livestock and poultry. And then probably the other use or the other issue that he pointed out that we're going to work on is probably making a few changes to the camp ground regulations that were proposed, in particular, not having a kind of a vague requirement that you can't tell what a camp store is from the road. Instead, I think we're just going to change that to say that signage related to the camp store cannot be visible from the road. Because otherwise we're getting into kind of an aesthetic question of, well, can you tell that it's a camp store or not? And what would we actually regulate to make it that no one would recognize what the building is? So I think from the list that I provided in the agenda, you can see thankfully there were not any major red flags in terms of our proposed rural regulations. We're going to follow up with the solicitor and just give him our feedback on a couple of his comments. But overall, I think we're on good footing to move forward and have the supervisors look at this at their, hopefully their November meeting. The planning commission did make a recommendation to the board back at your January meeting to forward this on for them to review and hopefully adopt. So I do not think there's any formal action required from the planning commission tonight. This was just a, an informational item, but we wanted to give you at least an update that this has been looked at. And we think we can move forward with just some minor tweaks. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to go ahead and try to answer them.
I got one on, on the first bullet point about the, the different minimum lot sizes. Could you remind us what those are?
Sure. So what it is, is that we, we permit agricultural uses on 20 acre parcels. Well, actually, I'm sorry, a new agricultural lot would need to be 20 acres in size. And we allow agricultural uses on parcels as small as five acres in size. But agricultural uses can have an associated single family dwelling with them. Then we also allow just single family homes to be created on individual parcels. So there is a separate requirement for, for those lots. And his concern was that, do we need to say, single family homes that have agricultural buildings associated with them? Or differentiate, you know, find a way to differentiate them? But in the end, what it was is we had decided that all single family homes, whether or not they have ag buildings associated with them would have the same setbacks. And the problem that I think the, the solicitor was pointing out is we ran into an issue a while back is that someone was building a home on a 10 acre parcel and they did not want to meet our ag setback requirements. So do they need to have ag setbacks in order to have a home on an ag sized parcel? If they don't do that, does it then take away their ability to have ag uses in the future? Our solution was let's just have all single family homes in our ag district have the same setbacks so that whether or not they want to have ag in the future, the underlying lot size and setbacks wouldn't affect them. I don't know if I've just made that even more confusing, but that was the issue I think the solicitor was trying to resolve. In the end, we just have, we wanted to make, make it clear that you could have a home on a five acre parcel and still farm it without having to have the additional acreage required for a single family home in addition to the five acres for the farm, the farmland.
Okay, so it's more of the issue of the acreage than the setback, is what you're saying.
It's a little bit of both. Our ordinance requires you to meet the minimum acreage requirements for, for both uses. So technically, if you wanted to have a, if we didn't have single family homes associated with farmland, you would have to meet the minimum requirement for farmland, which would be five acres, plus the minimum requirement for a single family home, which is an acre and a half. So you'd have to have six and a half acres just to be able to have a house and also farm the property. But the way we've structured the ordinance is that you can have farmland and an associated single family home with it. But that home doesn't need to meet any special farm setbacks. It can meet the setbacks for a regular house. You could kind of switch back and forth between whether or not you wanted to farm it or not.
So what is the setback for a house then?
Uh, it's 50 feet for the front, 50 feet for the side and 75 feet for the rear. But for an ag agricultural use, so a barn or poultry shed or anything like that, it would be a 100 foot side yard. That's the different setback requirement.
All right, all right. No, that all, so that's what it, that's makes sense to me. And he was questioning that.
Well, under our current, under our current ordinance, if you want to have a, a house on an agricultural parcel, you actually have to have a 100 foot side yard for the house. So if someone comes in with a 10 acre parcel and they say, well, I just want to build my house 50 feet from the, from the side yard, can they ever farm that in the? So if someone comes in with a ten-acre parcel and they say, well, I just want to build my house fifty feet from the, from the side yard, can they ever farm that in the future? That's the question. But we were trying to avoid that with a future update here to make it that we don't have to run into that problem again.
Okay, so that's something we may, that's something we may have to adjust is what you're saying.
We've already adjusted it with our proposal, with our proposed regulation that has been adjusted.
Okay.
But he was trying to understand, I think, why we were calling them out as having different lot size requirements as well. But I think from, from Todd and my perspective, we think we're on solid footing in order to, to, to administer this in the future.
All right. I'm thinking following you.
Probably easier if I had pulled up the actual table. It's easier, I think, when you look at the table to understand.
Okay. So are, are we, are we okay with how we're defining poultry and livestock at this point with the revisions?
We're going to need to come up with a definition for both of those. So I think we found some good examples from a township down in Lancaster County that we're going to try to just run past the solicitor, but they're, they're just basic definitions.
I think I'm good with where we are.
I have no other comments.
Anybody else? Are we okay to move on?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm wondering whether it's also scintillating that everybody's either logged off or gone to sleep. So we are at the point where we can discuss the agenda for November.
A report from the nominating committee. And if you want to talk about solar again, we can put solar on. And then I don't know if we have any plans, Todd or Mark.
I don't know if we're going to have any plans either. We have a few plans that have been kind of hovering around, waiting for things to happen that are still hovering. We have maybe one or two other plans that are sort of in the early review stages. It's too early to tell if they're going to be minor plans or preliminary plans. We'd have to come to the planning commission, but we'll know more as soon as we get a little further. At this point, I would say there's probably not going to be any plans.
Do you think we will have anything in the way of new information on the land consumption or on the solar that Mark can present to us?
I don't foresee having anything on the solar necessarily by next month. With the, the R1 discussion that we had had a couple of months ago, I could certainly try to bring some information back related to the land consumption discussion we had tonight. And talk a little more about that.
Bob, are you okay with the clarifications you got on the solar map to, to determine the, this, the soil restrictions?
I okay with it.
Yeah, are you, are you a little more clear on what there is?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I was clear before. I, I asked for that is just to highlight it. Because I just sent Mark a note. My, my point was that if, if we just saw that, then we could, I mean, if you really look at it, the amount of property that's out there that's going to be available or even economically significant is pretty small. So
Right.
then we tailor to, and I was just thinking, well, okay, we could just limit it, the, the map down to those parcels. It might be helpful. But other than that, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
I just got your note, Bob, and that makes perfect sense. And I can certainly prepare a map that shows that.
Cool.
I would agree.
I think-
Excuse me.
Any more information that we can find on the, on the solar situation? I think it would probably be good to have in November, if we can get it, that just helps clarify things a little bit more. And Amy, what's our situation? Do we, do we go before the supervisors in January? And when we present our work plan, do we just say, okay, what do you want us to do?
Well, I think what we'll probably do is when you go before the supervisors in January, you'll give them an update on where you are. And then, I mean, certainly you've made great progress on the accessory solar units. And then you can talk to them very earnestly about your conversation about the utility grade and ask them what direction they want to go in. They certainly, excuse me, were at the meeting over the summer with the folks from GLADPAP. And I think there are some that are in favor of solar, and I think there are some that are not in favor of solar. So I think you just have a very earnest conversation with them in January and get some direction and present what you've kind of come up with to date. You know?
As much more information as we can compile between now and then would be much better for us to present.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for November that anybody can think of right now, or should we move on? Reports?
That's me. So there was a joint meeting between the transportation and land use and the CRPC on October 5th. We talked at length about utility scale solar.
Where were you an hour ago?
Well, one of the, the general sort of directions is to learn more and to generate conversation about what the interest is on both the very local level and then the regional level. So this was all very productive and helpful in terms of talking at a larger level about what the interest is in facilitating or limiting solar. So I, I think we're right on track with what the region wants to be talking about. We also received a presentation for accessory use dwellings, accessory dwelling use or ADUs, and to expand what the definitions are and expand considering using these. There's going to be a study that will be conducted about what the possibilities are and what the barriers are for doing that. We have already, I think, been down that path with this committee. But on a regional level, this is what's being discussed. We also talked about the land consumption study. So we are ahead of the game, I think. In terms of having these conversations and, and generating sort of thinking about what we want to be happening in Harris Township, but also then what is happening at a regional level. We also reviewed the chip projects for 2122 and we have some things coming up that we'll be talking about water quality. We'll be talking about climate action and we'll be doing some updates on the comprehensive plan. And so that was a two and a half hour meeting as well. So I'm meeting doubt, folks.
Yikes. Thank you, Amy.
Throw yourself on that grenade. George?
There have been no technical committee, MPL meetings since our, our last planning commission meeting. So happily no new acronyms to report.
Amy, where are we with building permits at this point? Has everybody stopped by or do people need to be reminded?
That's a good question for Ms. Deb because she is the keeper of the permits.
I think I have two months' worth of permits. Everybody needs to sign except Bill.
I didn't say that just to get kudos for having stopped by, you know?
I don't recall saying thank you. I just said you stopped by.
Just trying to suck up.
Well, nozer.
I'm just trying to get out of here and, and, and turn off the Zoom meeting. Reaching actions by the bird of supervisors.
The supervisor's appointed Supervisor Harden to the State College Area Connector Projects Study Team, their committee. They're doing the Planning and Environmental Linkages Study. And we just got an email yesterday or today that they're going to be having an online public meeting. The online public meeting is actually over four or five days. So I think what they must be doing is it's recorded and you can go in over these days and log in, watch the meeting and submit your comments. And so I'll be sending out some information in the e-update about that because I know we have some residents who are interested. And in addition to Supervisor Harden being on the State College Area Connector Project Study Committee, Mr. Harrigan has offered to be his alternate should Supervisor Harden not be able to attend the meeting. So we definitely got the A team on this project.
Thank you, George.
Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are out of here.